First agenda is we got a public hearing on local law, ongoing garage and yard sales. Need a motion to move to a public hearing on that?
I'll move.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody have any comments on that?
My partner in crime is not here.
We'll leave that open and we'll move on to the next public hearing. A local law to override the tax cap.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Any comments on that?
Joe, just to clarify that, that is just so that you can override it if you need to, right?
Yes.
Instead of you going to. Do you predict that you're gonna have to, or do you think it's?
Just your property?
Right now, and I'm not sure if the rest of the board knows, there's been... The way the budget was originally, yes, we were gonna be over. But now, gone back through the general fund and made a couple of adjustments. It looks like we can come in under. And we're looking at a projected tax rate increase instead of 2%, 1.5%, which is gonna put the tax rate at 9.60,000, which is still less than it was three years ago. Three years ago, it was like 9.63 and change. And while we made the changes to the budget, page one, elections contractual. We're gonna have elections again next year for trustees. And their fees are up. So originally, we had $850 in there. We raised that to $1,700. Page seven, other home community service, personal services. Originally, that was $58,000. Talking with Paul, we think we can make some adjustments. A lot of it's dealing with cleanup around the village. So we adjusted that down to $40,000. And by doing that, pretty sure we can stay under the tax cap and be at 1.5%. And that also changes our deficit that we gotta take out of... From balance. How many pages? Okay, that's gonna change our... Down there where it says net revenue, less expenditures, and the tentative budget money we had to take out of... Reserves, originally it was $198,000 and change. And now it's gonna go down to $189,697. And then were the only main changes we've made on the general fund budget. And that, like I say, should keep us under the tax cap. But by law, if we don't have this resolution, we don't have to pass it. We just have to have the public hearing by this date. Any other questions on that? All right, we'll get into the organizational meeting appointments. I'd like to appoint Dan Salmon, deputy mayor, through April 3rd, 2024. Clerk Treasurer, Daniel St. Louis, through March 31st, 2027. Deputy clerk, Wendy Snowden, through April 3rd, 2024. Village historian, Charlotte Beagle, term through April 3rd, 2024. We have a motion for those four?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we got committees. Pretty much the committees stayed the same. I know I talked with Tony, and he didn't really wanna jump right into finance. So I put him on capital future planning along with trustee Salmon. Personals, trustee Widgert, trustee Trillian. Finance, trustee Trillian. It shouldn't be Tony.
Okay, I'm okay with it. Yep. Thank you.
That you can change on this one.
That's okay.
That's the one that you gave me. That's the one that you gave me.
It's okay, I'm good with it.
All right. Okay with that, Tim?
No, but I appreciate that.
I'm okay with that.
All right, okay. All right, we need a motion for those...
Can I make a comment first?
Go ahead.
With the committees this year, I think we should have a standard date when these committees meet. And I think they need to have a better purpose than we've done in the past. Capital future planning, we need to develop a scope as to what that is and what we're dealing with it. The other committees, I, you know, I won't speak for because I'm on the liaison for the other for county and fire department, which is working fine. I think that we should have budget workshops next year. Thank you.
We have the motion, do we have a second on that?
So I just wanna clarify.
Motion, motion moved.
Who was on the finance, me or Tony?
Well, it's all right, but you, Tony wants to be on it.
Well, I, I'm not gonna say I want to be on it, but if you're good with it, go ahead and take it. It doesn't matter to me, it's just that, I don't know how often that you have to do it. That's the thing.
Usually it's once a month, it's to sign the vouchers and then do the audit of the things demons for the office.
Specific dates, all right?
Uh-uh.
No? Whenever you can get it.
Next meeting.
It's a short window, though. I think it fairness to everybody because...
I mean, if you can do it, I'm more than happy to step back. What are you getting at with your, you know, job drum? You might not be as available as I would be just to come here and do it. Yeah, technically, I got out, I got out of work 10 minutes ago, so.
So you want me to change that to Tim?
Yes, please. If, if that's okay.
That's fine.
I think it would be very smart to...
I just wanted to clarify.
...strains, because I know how that works with the fighting.
Somehow, the papers, Danielle and I sent back and forth.
Yeah.
Must've got one of them mixed up. All right. We got a first and second on that, right?
I don't know.
I mean, lost the vote.
Yes, we got a first and second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it moves us down to liaisons. Fire department, trustee Salmon. Police department, trustee Widgert. Planning board and zoning board, Tony, they meet at 6:00.
Yeah, I was on the DBA.
So you should, that one should be you.
A few years ago, so yeah, I'm good.
Municipal board, trustee Trillian. Town, still wanna stand there? Trustee Trillian. County, trustee Salmon. Ray call out, basically that's... Tim, I'll let you explain to Tony what exactly that is.
You're a River, River area council governments, it's a, I don't know how many is there? A dozen probably now, different towns that are in a, basically a cooperative government. And I don't think they meet during the summertime at all.
It's only three, four a year, you kind of...
Yeah, three, four meetings a year, and it's usually at night, usually in the evening, so.
Okay.
The only thing you would have to do there is give Mickey Dietrich Tony's email instead of just...
Yeah.
Okay.
Through the Tub Hill Commission, they... Nikki Dietrich, I don't know if you know Mickey or not. I might know him, but I'm named, he's, he's usually at our meetings. He probably will be at our regular meetings.
Ray, yeah, he doesn't miss him.
So you're okay with the one?
Yep.
Okay, we need a motion for all those liaisons.
I'll move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Official undertaking, I think we have to do these individually, if I remember last year from attorney. Official undertakings, action to authorize appropriate insurance coverage bonding for law-dent municipal officials. We need a motion to authorize that.
I'll move. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Official newspaper, this is for our publications that we have to put out for meetings, different things. And we designated Watertown Daily Times. We need a motion to...
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
Are they... Did we, did we request anything from the journal as far as pricing on that, or...
The problem with the journal...
Not our subscriptions?
Yeah, it's very hard to get in.
We do have the journal subscription, but the problem, the problem with posting in the journal, it comes out usually later than our meetings and other things.
It's a, it's a weekly.
Yeah.
Strike, strike question.
The other things that's happened with the Times now, too. You can't just call up today and say, "I wanna put this in the paper tomorrow." You have to notify them way ahead, and they fit you in. It's not like the good old days when you, if you call them by Thursday, it was published Monday.
Right. My, my only question is, they have an online presence, right? Is that, is this included?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you, but I would think it should be. Because when you look on their online, they got the different sections for sports and editors and all that stuff.
Yeah, I believe when we asked them for our subscription, they said, "Oh, like affidavits and public postings are available online." So people who don't get the actual paper should be able to pull them up.
Okay.
Right, I think you have to pay for it, don't you?
I think you're allowed so many things, and I think public postings you could read. I think it's like the other subscriptions, like sports and more of like the recreational stuff.
Okay. And if you got a, if you, say you've got a subscription, and one day it doesn't come out, usually you can go online, too, so.
I'll, I'll move that we approve that. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Notification of regular board meetings. Regular board meetings of the board of trustees will be on the third Wednesday each month at 4:00 P.M. Location for meetings will be at the village municipal building.
I'll make a motion we approve that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Special meeting, may be called by the mayor or an agreement of two trustees. Trustees will be notified individually by the village clerk. Notification to the public and media will be made as soon as possible after the scheduling of the meeting, with a minimum of 72 hours notice if that time is available.
I'll move to approve that.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, these I think we can do as a group. Resolutions to adopt... 2023 advance approval of claims. 2023-5 designated depositories allowance. 2023-6 mileage allowance. 2023-7 attendance of training. Should be, you put copies of...
They are, I think I put them out of order, though, on accident. I think I put the minutes before.
Oh, you're gonna say they were in the, they were in the email.
Yeah. I think the ones I printed, though, they're out of order a little bit.
I'll move to approve those.
Anybody got any questions on them?
The mileage is what, 65 cents or something?
I think the mileage is up there, 62 cents, I think now. It went up in June. That one, the federal government made a change.
And the only change on the...
Attendance training, basically that's like when we send our water operators and our sewer plant operators, even the DPW guys, if we have to send them out for training, that's just a matter of training.
Yeah, that, that's the way it should be.
And the only other change was on our depositories, we're not using KeyBank anymore. That's closed down, we moved everything to community.
And that's been completed, by the way. All right, motion on those four items.
Yep, we did that. Tony to the first and Dan seconded.
Crank up the air, I didn't catch that.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Rules of procedure attached, if you got any questions on that one?
I'm not motioning to approve it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Date of our next organizational meeting, which will be April 3rd, 2024.
We'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of minutes, our regular board meeting of March 15th, 2023.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Special meeting on 3/27, 2023.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of vouchers, none. Unfinished business, tentative budget. One thing we need to do on that is schedule a public hearing on it. And I would like to schedule a public hearing for April 19th. Please, next board meeting. Anybody have any problems with that?
Mayor, I'm, I'm gonna be out of town, but I'm gonna try and join the meeting via Skype. I'm gonna work with Paul, hopefully to set it up so it can be on my cellphone. You said you'd help me.
Hey, hey, guys.
Yeah, I was out there.
I don't think it's that hard, I probably configured it out on my own, but...
It's pretty easy, I'll take care of it.
I got it on my computer, but I'm not taking that with me.
Budget in your packet?
Uh, yes. No, I, I don't believe it's in the packet, but she did email it to me. I did, I did look it over yesterday, yes. I did not come up with any questions.
Does anybody on the board here have any questions on the budget as far as it is at the moment? If not, we'll move on.
I'll send new ones, too, of the update meeting today with like the election and stuff.
Yeah, I just wrote it in, we just, that was one thing that came up today, it's something from last month.
Man, I don't have, I don't have questions on the budget, other than I might have a comment or two. But I'd rather discuss that with you in private at some time. We had to discuss it, I think you know where I'm coming from.
We need a motion to...
Schedule the public hearing.
Schedule the public hearing. So I'll move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
April 19th?
Yeah, 19th.
Public hearing. April 19th? New business, draft local law, certain writer notice, anybody get a copy of that? Looked at?
Yes.
Basically, it's, uh... The village should've had one, I know I looked at for it with Pam, she's pretty sure we had one years ago, but I haven't, but our insurance, I won't say insurance, but our attorneys telling us, it should be updated every 10 years anyway. And so we know it hasn't been updated, so basically we rewrote it. Then I talked with our insurance agent, once we get this passed, it's also gonna allow us to have a little lower rates for liability insurance. So basically, I'd like to schedule a public hearing for that also, for April 19th, if that's all right with everybody.
Okay.
Do you second?
Yeah, I need a motion and second.
I'll make a motion, we schedule that public hearing for April 19th.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Yeah. Aye.
Before I forget, too, we have the other public hearing, remember Joe, it was supposed to be today for the recreational vehicles? That got moved to the 19th because of a publication issue trying to get it in the paper. That was supposed to be for today, but it didn't make it in, so that'll be the 19th, too.
We probably should remotion that, though.
Yeah, I don't know if we need to or not, but it got pushed to that one, because there wasn't enough time to get it in for today.
And does the paper reflect it that way, the 19th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion if we make the correction on that, so the minutes show that the public hearing for the recreational vehicle, uh, public hearing will be on the 19th of April at 4:00 P.M.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, boy. I think we leave the public hearing open a little while longer on those other two items.
Mayor, an issue has come up that I would like to comment on. Uh, I, I believe we should send the town of Lawwell commendation letter concerning the SRT run on the 22nd, um, after, after careful review by their attorney. And there was many questions raised. I, at this time, do not know officially what the county stands is on it. But the issue we have is, there, there's one word in the policy that says spectators are covered. And as of right now, from what I understand, there's not a word for participants, so...
The only, the only problem I have with that, Dan, is I kinda see where you're coming from, but the SRT run has never affected the village as much. Other than maybe somebody get out of their way and end up coming down Snow Street. But what I'm saying is, I don't think the village should get involved in this. I think we should stay out of it.
Here's my remarks to, to that statement. As a village resident, I'm also a town resident. And so, as a village board, we should be, it's, it's no different than the county sending resolutions to the, to state when they want something, if something done. That's just, you know, I'm, I'm fine with not doing it, because I've, I've announced it publicly and Nick is here, and I feel that the town has done the right thing. And as, as village residents, each one of us is also a town resident. And, uh, at least we're protected that way, so. And I'm, I'm pleased that, that they, they realized that. So I'll leave it at that. I will also bring up, on that same, and, and I don't wanna put words in the fire chief's mouth, but I'm gonna make a statement that, and I think I might've made it last month, that there was announced that you, if our fire department was gonna provide security, which certainly becomes a part of our issue. But the only thing was, they were never approached. And they will not be, let's say changed, they can't button, they can't security. That would just put them in a liability situation.
Good, I'll please change.
That's all, man.
Okay, correspondence, Lawwell bond here, fire department, the chief's annual report. Does a motion approve that?
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And it looks like they had election of officers, we need a motion to approve that.
Again, I will make the motion as liaison.
And I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Also, on, on behalf of the fire department, I happened to be in, uh, jobs on Saturday night to my granddaughter's birthday party, when the call came out for the fire on Park Place. And the professionalism that I witnessed and the quick response and the way they set up traffic control was very, very, done very, very well. And, uh, they saved the property by, by beating that fire down within 45 minutes.
And we need a motion to, uh, fire department accept their new member, Todd Miller.
I'll move. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Also, the, we need a motion for the resignation of Tyler Thomas.
I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, can we have a motion to close a public hearing on local law tax cap override?
So move.
Second? I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, I'll make the motion if we put that in place in case we need it.
No, we don't, Dan, we don't need to.
Yeah, we don't need to.
We just have to have the public hearing. If, if, when we do the budget, if we find we're gonna be over, then we pass it.
I'll strike the motion.
Because if we pass it before, then there's a ton of paperwork to resend it.
You got something to do?
I don't think we're gonna need it. Okay, any more questions on the local law as far as ongoing garage and yard sales?
I'll make a motion.
Close that one?
Yep.
I'll second that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, that one, Dan, if you wanna adopt it, we need a motion to adopt it.
To adopt the...
The local law on garage sales.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Officers committee reports, uh, village attorneys not here. Okay, I've been, a couple of things I've been working on. One, I've been working with Bob Mullin and Dan Myers and Mike Young for next year's summer rec program, and kinda putting together the costs. Kind of Mike put in for a couple of grants. And I've been in touch with Brian Piché, and the county has agreed to fund the same amount they funded last year for the children outside the town and village of Lawwell. So that's a work in progress, that's ongoing. Clerk Treasurer, is that any?
Nope, I will send out the revised budget to everybody, so that they'll have the updates that we need today. And then if anybody has any other questions, we can go from there.
Chief, please, down here, superintendent, anything?
Um, tenderness, spring cleanup is gonna start April 17th, depending on the weather. You can catch most of my debris in the neighbor yard after the school windstorm?
Yeah. Anything capital future planning?
Not far.
Personnel, anything?
Nope.
Finance?
Nope.
One thing I can say on the finance, Danielle and I worked... Yesterday, we finished up the rescue money report that has to be turned in in April. That's all been done, taken care of. And we had the special meeting on transferring funds from one bank to the other. That's all been completed, and the money's safely in the bank. And hopefully, it's gonna make us a lot more interest, which will help.
I guess that, that was my question, that's why we moved, right, was because service and interest?
The bank, the bank, I'll tell you, the bank we were in, the interest rates have been running stellar for the last year. Bank we were in was 0.04%. Wasn't making us nothing. And, uh, went to them, there's a lot of things out there, you got like New York class, just paying big money right now, and some other ones. And so, went to them where the money was, the bank it was in, and they didn't wanna budget, they weren't gonna change, so.
Wasn't budget, we...
I know Danielle did some looking around, I did some looking around, and I finally found a bank that was willing to pay us quite a bit more. Uh, and I'll tell you what, we're getting, on this, right now, we're getting 4.45%. Uh, and the 4.5%, we...
It's a lot of money.
We have, we have access to this account anytime we want. There's no service fees or anything.
But like I said, I'm not, I'm not complaining.
No, but I'm just saying, it's that, that's why we moved.
It's a smart move, it really is.
We're gonna pick up a substantial sum of money over a year.
There's no, if I recall right there, there's no...
My thought there is, it's gonna help us hopefully next year on the general fund budget.
Yep. There's no timeframe as to how long we have to leave it in?
No, and we, we can add to it or take out, but my thought is...
You mean my friend in years' time, somebody who...
We let that make this money and we use the interest.
Absolutely.
Because many years ago, if you go back to 2006, '07, '05, back in there, this village was making 300, 400, $500,000 on interest, on money that was in reserve accounts for like equipment and stuff like that.
Good move. Absolutely.
Liaisons, fire department, anything?
I think I said everything there.
Other than what we just threw through?
No, we're there.
Police department, anything, Tim?
No.
Planning and zoning, you haven't been to any meetings?
No.
No.
Municipal board?
Yep, we had a meeting next week.
Yep.
And it was pretty informative.
Okay, town, they'll be tomorrow, no, wait a minute, I'm hiding myself quite a week there. County, anything, Dan?
Uh, no reports, sir.
Uh, recreation, that's, but I just gave you a rundown of where we're, about where we are with that at the moment. Racco, anything, you guys, or?
Uh, no, I mean, the monthly report was sent just here the other day by Mickey or Danielle, kind of, just a little bit different format on it, I don't know if you guys know what's that, but.
They changed the format, yeah.
Tony will need to be on the email list.
Yeah, I got his email today, so now anything I say out, you'll, you'll get.
Yeah, sorry, I meant to be down there.
No, you're fine.
My Fridays tend to run away with me.
You, I get it.
The only thing, I'll, I'll go back up here to the police department, quick. You know, we've all talked those radar signs, so Randy and I, we finally got a guy's name from Nikki, and we found a head, and, uh, we, the money was in the budget this year for those signs, so they've been ordered and they should be showing up, if not by the end of this week, probably next week, so we'll definitely have them to be out here for the spring and summer weather, so they're, they're all ordered.
Are they port, they're portable, correct, man?
Yes, they're, we, we ordered two of them, they're portable.
They have a lot of trailers?
They can go on a tree, they can go on a telephone pole, they can go on a street sign, they're extremely portable, so you don't have to have a, you can pick it up and move it.
And one nice thing about them, they record the time of day and everything, so we can check, like, between, say, 7:30 and 8:30, we got a lot of speeders coming through here and they know where the patrols can move out.
They'll be in charge, Dan.
Yeah, I know, they'll be in charge, I'll hope, take to get a replacement, that would be nice and well.
Somebody can pick it up and move it?
No.
Well, no, it'll be, it'll be a tag.
I guess that's it tonight, so, nobody's got anything else?
Other than comment?
Move for journal.
Other than comment?
Oh, yeah, that's right. See, you didn't jump up there.
I have a question.
She didn't write it on here, I mean, I didn't say, I'll get going.
We talked about you passing a law, people parking their trailers on the street in the future, is that coming up in the next meeting or what?
Oh, were you sleeping?
The RV one?
Yeah.
That was supposed to be, but what happened is the newspaper didn't get it published, so.
Next meeting, then?
This meeting.
Yes, there wasn't a public publish, so we can't.
I know my street was targeted.
I think Nick had it maybe published, but I didn't have it published.
Yeah, my, my street was targeted for that, and I agree with that, they, the trailers take too much space in the street.
You're talking about trailers, what do you mean?
Drag behinds.
What's that?
Drag behind.
Like, like a camping trailer, not a trailer or a utility trailer?
Or motorhomes. Some people have motorhomes now, too. We talked about in the meeting, that you don't want people parking on the street.
No, I, this doesn't have nothing to do with parking in the street, this is some, basically, set up so people aren't living in them on, on their property or, you know, that type of setup, basically.
Cause we had some complaints last year of people living in RVs in the village, and that's where all this was done, though. I think you might be thinking of the tractor trailer one and parking on the streets, but that was a sidewalk.
A sidewalk.
You took care of that, bro.
Yeah, that was a, a couple of years ago, we did that.
Last year, last year. Well, we got one, one issue right now, I don't, I don't talk to Phil and Randy on it, they're trying to get it straightened out, cause we do have one individual that's breaking the system.
I think that was.
Yeah, it's gone.
It's gone. Gone about that tractor trailer? Yes, it was broke, it was broke down, and that's why.
The one, the one, for the couple of weeks it was there, it was broke down, but it's not broke down anymore.
It's gone, though, I won't lie there today. Maybe it's just gone for the day, I don't know.
Anything else, Henry?
I'll make a motion to a chair.
Wake up, Ed.
I'm on a gag order.
Who's gagging?
Where's your partner? I said, where's your partner?
I'm threatening.
You sent him to Florida?
Uh, just, that's my buddy B here, but he'll be here next, next meeting, I'm sure.
Thanks for warming that up.
Alright, I would say I appreciate some help tearing this down tonight, cause town doesn't have a meeting tomorrow after.
Ah. Oh, I didn't know. General losses.
I want to introduce myself to you, my name's Vinnie Nord, I live on, uh, Stose, or Stose Street, geez.
Dewett.
20 years ago, yes, Dewett Street.
I'm thinking of the housing issue.
That's gonna be in the back of my mind, too. I, I'm, I want to announce that I'm seeking the Republican nomination for District 5 legislator, I'll be running against Dick Chartren, um, I wanna get to know you guys,